Okay, yeah, we're good. We're recording. Um, welcome, everybody, to tonight's Planning Commission for the city of Tumwater for Tuesday, October 22nd. It's 7:00 PM and our meeting is called to order. I'll call the role first. Commissioner Edwards?
Here.
Commissioner Kirkpatrick?
Here.
Commissioner Schumacher is excused. Vice Chair Sullivan?
Here.
Good, good, good. Uh, Commissioner Tobias?
Here.
Uh, Commissioner Varela is excused. Um, we are expecting Commissioner Von Holtz shortly, but we do have a quorum, so we can continue.
Oh, she's here.
There we go. Uh, we see her logging on right here. Feel Kelly. Commissioner Von Holtz is here. Great. And, and me, Commissioner Robbins. So, good deal. The quorum, and we're off and going. Uh, does anybody have any changes to our agenda tonight? Some head shakes. Okay. Uh, any commissioners report? Um, Brad, managers report?
A couple of quick updates with Mike Matlock being on vacation for the next two weeks out of three. Um, I'm kind of slammed, so if I forget major things, let me know. Uh, we are making some progress, maybe with the, the Wildland Urban Interface Code. Uh, we've had a couple of conversations with folks who've had conversations with folks on the State Building Code Council that came up with somewhat divergent interpretations of what we can and can't do. So, our building official and myself, we're going to be meeting with the representative from the Building Code Council this Friday. Hopefully, we'll get enough clarification, uh, from them on how they're thinking or should be interpreting the code. Uh, and then we'll be having a conversation with our city attorney about whether or not their interpretation of what's written is sufficient for us to go that way or not. My concern is if people forget what they said and that kind of thing.
Entertainer meeting?
Uh, the State Building Code Council. They're the folks who put together the, the Washington amendments to the, uh, Interface Code. No. No, the, that actually, the enforcement side is an interesting one because we've been asking the question, who actually enforces it? Uh, really, it comes down to the city to enforce it. And there's no one really going to be watching over us to say thou shalt or shalt, but more importantly, if there's a if there's an, if there's a situation, uh, that involves some liability from something happening, you know, the city will have some concerns about that. So, we need to make sure that we do what we need to do to follow the letter. So, hopefully, across your fingers, by September, we'll get more clarification of where we're going and maybe be able to restart all the urban forestry stuff again. That's our intent. Uh, that's probably the big stuff, so.
Is there somebody from the, um, tree board participating in that too, or just staff?
It's just at the staff level now. Uh, we want to make sure that we understand everything before we tell everybody else.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Okay. Um, let's see. Public comments? Do you have anybody here? Oh, good. Um, Mr. Tonio from the Jolt. Um, would you like to address the Planning Commission tonight?
Uh, hello, not sure if you can hear me. Uh, Jerome from the Jolt News.
Yep.
I don't have any comments to make. Thank you.
Very good. Glad you're here, though. Um, we did receive a letter. Uh, Brad, did everybody get that? Um, a letter with some suggestions on use from, for, um, housing? I don't, do we have to, we don't have to read that into the record or something, do we?
No, I just want to make sure that you
Sure, everybody got it. Okay. Great. And you, did you hear from anybody else?
No. So, for the record, we received a, a letter courtesy of email from Bonnie Blessing concerning our discussions about the housing element. Uh, we'll include that in the record as, also included in our discussions as we move forward.
Uh, with that, I guess we can move to number seven, the big item. Our 2025 Conference Plan Periodic Update, the housing elements.
So, again, uh, as we're going through this, please feel free to interrupt if you ask questions about any of this. Um, we are taking a tour of obviously the, our current comprehensive plan and talking a little bit about where, um, what we're going to be updating and what we should be focusing on as we're doing these updates. Also, the, uh, reason that your package is so gigantic is I want to make sure that everybody has the same information, uh, as we go forward. So, a lot of the stuff will be reusing and reusing over the course of the next couple of years, so, um, I think it's just a good idea that everyone have copies of that. We are in the final stages of getting our website active. We have a website address. We have content loaded up. Uh, I just need to confirm with our communications folks so that I can flip the switch and be live. Uh, on the website, we'll also have links to all this material, uh, plus links to all of the current comprehensive plan stuff. And as we're updating materials, you can access the staff reports and elements and everything else. Uh, so, it's intended to be sort of a, one stop for everybody, planning commission, public, and so forth. Housing is going to be probably next to, probably the biggest, uh, elements in terms of the amount of things that we need to deal with, uh, to update as part of this, uh, update process. The state legislature was very active, uh, in 2022 and last, this finishing session earlier this year, in a number of changes that, uh, outline what we have to cover and why. Uh, so, we have a lot of work to do that we didn't have previous, and we had a fair amount before. So, what I'd like to do is sort of talk through those requirements and the overall growth management goal for this. I want to give you an outline of what the current version of the housing element covers, uh, talk a little bit about some of the specific issues, uh, that we'll be looking at. Uh, talk a little bit about how we're going to be needing to incorporate diversity, equity, inclusion throughout. Uh, there's very specific state guidelines and requirements for the housing element that I think are probably appropriate for us to extend to other parts of the compliance. So, this will be sort of introductory discussion of that and how it would apply to everything else. Um, and then we'll discuss a little bit some of the state guidance materials that are included in your packet. Um, I, and if you feel that there isn't enough guidance materials, I'm expecting more of this fall from the state, um, on the housing especially. So, uh, there will be plenty of, uh, things for us to go through. Um, just in a general sense, this is what the housing need from the, according to the State Department of Commerce for the entire state, uh, they're, uh, saying that we will need 1.1 million new homes, uh, in the next 20 years. What that means on the local level, uh, by local, I mean Thurston County, uh, it means we'll probably need close to 60,000 new homes in the next 20 years as a component of that. Yes, Terry?
What point do we replace homes with units? So, it's, you know, I mean, we've been talking about homes for years, but now apparently we're shifting to talking about units.
I, I think we'll be flipping back and forth because when we, the, the guidance material speaks of homes, they're not consistent, uh, yet. And I apologize because I'm not consistent either in how I use the terms throughout. But, um, essentially, dwelling units is probably the best way to explain them. It covers all different kinds of housing. Um, you know, everything from the single occupancy all the way to a single-family home. Uh, so, when we speak of homes, Terry, I acknowledge your comment, uh, we're speaking about one unit for some, some household. Correct. So, the breakdown of this, uh, on the statewide level is they, this is, they've laid out the, the, the need and, and all that for, uh, what we'll be needing to do for the next 20 years. You'll notice, especially at the lower end, uh, the 30% and less, both, uh, public, uh, permanent supportive housing, that's the PSH, and the non-permanent supportive housing, uh, is a substantial, uh, component of what the need will be. Um, we're starting to have discussions in the county about how to allocate this. We'll have our very first meeting this Thursday to sort of walk through the formal fight-it-out amongst the jurisdictions process. Uh, but, eh, the statewide numbers are definitely reflective on the local level as well of the need. Uh, we hit the 50 to 100% AMI pretty well in terms of what we have now, uh, but the lower ends are definitely areas that we're going to have to focus on a lot of attention on how we're actually going to achieve, uh, this level of, of housing.
And could, um, you know, if, um, if the state level is roughly 1.1 million, uh, new homes over 20 years and the Thurston County need is, uh, roughly 60,000 of those, roughly 6% of the state's total, would the 6% be true across the, that spectrum down below too?
It's, it's pretty close across the spectrum. Uh, definitely, we, we are short, uh, in the Thurston region of the under 80%. Anything under 80% we're really going to have to focus on, especially in Tumwater, and this is based on the preliminary numbers I've seen so far. We're in relatively decent shape in the 80 to 100 and the 100 to 120 range. And then surprisingly, we have a, according to this, we have a much higher need for plus 120, um, housing. So, but, the, the new state requirements actually don't, uh, require us to do anything about the plus 120. It will just take care of itself, I guess. So, we don't have to do any policy work or anything like that. Yes, Terry?
Uh, I'm wondering, uh, what's happened a couple of times already is if, uh, permanent supportive housing is, let's just use an example, say, built in Olympia, that the cities of Tumwater and, uh, Lacey, uh, contribute financially, uh, to those, how does that get mixed into this, uh, plan? Because the housing's not going to be in Tumwater. But Tumwater is provide, helping to provide the housing.
Yeah. And I think, and that also brings in the discussion of the emergency beds that we'll have to provide as part of the community. So, when I, this answer will probably try to cover both of those kinds of categories. There are, and this is a discussion that we'll be having, uh, as part of these allocation meetings, is how, how are we actually going to make this work? Um, the point that I've written down to, to talk about from my perspective, working with the Regional Housing Council, is that I definitely think that Tumwater should have its fair share of this type of housing, but it needs to be, uh, you know, delivered in a way that is, uh, efficient and economical to those providing. Uh, we're not big enough to have individual service providers for each jurisdiction. And, you know, it, I think it's one thing to say be in Olympia, Tumwater, Lacey, where we're relatively close to one another. South County, totally different. You know, it doesn't make sense for Bakota to have its own, uh, permanently supportive housing and all the necessary wraparound services that are needed for them. That's the important part that I think is left out of the conversation. So, I'm, I, it's, it's part of the discussion and I want to, I'm curious to see where we can go with it for that. We'll definitely talk about our work with the Regional Housing Authority, our contributions to the overall, you know, all this and the fact that we're open to placement in the city, uh, but I don't want it to make it more expensive just so we hit these artificial numbers, uh, and is counter, you know, counter to what we're trying to do.
So, kind of following on to Commissioner Kirkpatrick's question then, um, did the, did the recent state legislation, uh, speak to regional approaches, um, like what we're, we already had going on and, and as being or could satisfy the, the requirements in so far?
Not to the extent that I'd hoped, uh, meaning that I think we're going to have to talk about meeting on the local level. I think we'll be able to refer to some of the regional things, but we're not going to be able to point to the regional thing as the solution. That's the way I read the legislation.
Something to press on if, I don't know if you get, uh, you know, something in the works with the Association of Cities or something like that. While we may have time, you know, to still work on that, to modify that language.
My primary concern with this is I don't want it to be a paper exercise because I, you know, I can put together something that meets the intent. Uh, I want it to be actually something that we can use, monitor, all those kinds of things going forward. So, uh, the more we can do that, the better I think it would be. Um, some little data taken from the December 2022 State Housing Survey, the, um, Puget Sound Regional Council, which is the, the core of the Central Puget Sound, and the Department of Commerce, uh, conducted a survey, uh, of statewide. Um, and they, some of the findings they had, uh, shouldn't be a terribly surprised, uh, 83% of respondents said more reasonably priced housing was needed in their communities. Uh, 78% had wanted more housing opportunities. Uh, housing costs were clearly, uh, the top issue by four times more than traffic and transportation. Really, no surprise there either. Now, these numbers were also broken out not only by statewide, but also Central Puget Sound, Western Washington, which we are a part of, and Eastern Washington. And those numbers are fairly similar across. There were some gradations, but it wasn't dramatic changes across all of this. On the other side, uh, 77% said rents were too high. Uh, 75% said it costs too much to buy a house. Uh, very difficult to find affordable housing for 49% and, uh, other, other related things like this. So, this is, I, you know, I just, just to state again, this is the background from which we're working. Also, some more in, information about government agencies, say, 64% said that government agencies should do more to provide housing not being delivered by the market. That will be a rather large change, uh, from what we do currently. Um, so, there's the policy side, and then there's the funding side of how we actually accomplish that. Uh, and 58% agreed that middle housing, such as triplexes and so forth, would be allowed, should be allowed in single-family zones if they need all the standards for that zone. Uh, so, we'll definitely see this was reflected in the state legislation that came through in 2023. Uh, we'll talk a little bit more about that. What you also will probably notice is there's a great deal of overlap between what we're talking about in the land use element in terms of where we are, you know, putting the land uses, uh, including residential and what those residential things are, and the housing element. So, a lot of connections between those things. I want to draw your attention to this very exciting graphic that I, I spent too much time putting together, so I just need to ask somebody who does this for a living to do it more than me. Um, but I think it's a very useful way to kind of understand all the requirements and how they all fit together. Uh, on the very top, we have the Growth Management Act, uh, with the housing goals and the 15 total goals plus some specific requirements. Those are in turn are filtered down through our county-wide planning policies, uh, which basically set the rules for development and coordination between the different comprehensive plans of all the jurisdictions within the county. Uh, those planning policies will not be updated, uh, before our update. They'll probably be, if they are updated, it'll be in a very small way. Uh, but what we have now is, is what, is what we're going to go forward with. Below that comes all the things that are part of, of the city's purview from our comprehensive plan, uh, basically establishing the policy, setting the map for where things will happen, translating into what we're looking at today, which is the housing element. From that, go to our development regulations. That includes not only, uh, zoning code, uh, land division, environmental protection, but also all of our, uh, engineering standards and so forth. And then finally, at the very bottom, BMO, we get a house. Now, the BMO get a house part leaves out all the important parts about who actually builds it, how much it costs to build, and how much the supplies to build those things cost and who could actually afford it. So, i- it's not a diminishing the importance of the final end product, but it's just sort of how we handle this on our side of the, the equation. The goal, again, uh, for housing is to plan for and accommodate. Uh, and that's an active thing, which is a change from the previous, uh, iteration of the goal. Housing affordable to all economic segments of the population of the state, promote a variety of residential densities and housing types, and encourage preservation of existing housing stock. The key things that are part of this goal that were not part of the previous goal, uh, was the accommodate housing affordable, uh, to all economic segments. Um, that's a much more explicit than provide housing for everybody, uh, which was essentially what the previous goal was. So, this simple diagram, uh, lays out the whole process. And I think actually, if you get beyond the fact it's, it's, the colors are a little muted, uh, and that's not my fault, I just copied this from the Commerce Guidelines. But, um, I think it does a good job of sort of laying out this whole process that I've been trying to explain, uh, especially as part of the, the housing framework. Um, things that you see starred with the green are new or modified housing needs, uh, for projected, PHN is projected housing needs. Um, and then the new equity, which RDI, RDI requirements is racially disparate impacts that we have to address. So, just as a way to follow along. The very top row deals with the state process. We start with the Washington State Growth Management Act, uh, 3678. We, from that, we get our population projections that are derived from Office of Financial Management at the state level. From that, Department of Commerce comes up with the housing need projections by county. And then, uh, they also have provided at the Commerce level a housing needs allocation tool and the guides material. Now, that's going to be guiding, uh, the housing allocation process of the county that we're just starting right now. Taking it, we don't deal with the regional process with the multi-county policies. This is, uh, Puget Sound Regional Council, so you can ignore this box, but this is our process. We have our county planning policies that I mentioned. I mentioned that our county population target that comes from OFM, our county-wide housing needs that comes from Commerce, and then the housing needs allocation process, uh, which is, uh, which is what we're working on at the moment. There are specific, uh, three potential methods that have been laid out by the state for allocating housing, uh, and on the new side. Either you have an option A, where you say if, if everybody's going to increase, they need another 9% housing over what they have currently. Each of those income groups receives the same amount across every jurisdiction. So, what that means is, um, if Tumwater is out and needs to have, you know, 10,000 housing units and 2,000 of those is under 30%, percentages will be the same across all the jurisdictions. Option B is a, well, let's take into account who's providing which level of housing now first, uh, rather than just add on what we currently have. So, for example, City of Olympia provides all of the emergency housing in the county currently, over 600 units. Nobody else has any, excuse me. I think the county has 10 and Lacey has six. So, rather than just adding another 9% on top of that, there's some weighting between the jurisdictions to ensure others are picking up the share of those over the next 20 years. The third option is a whole bunch of hybrids of all of those things. The problem with the, the second method is it results in some negative numbers. In some cases, for example, Rochester or Bakota has more than enough 30 to 50% AMI housing. Uh, in fact, they, they need to encourage other types of housing. You know, market and all this other stuff doesn't come into play. So, i- it's hard to explain to policymakers and the public why we're dealing with negative numbers and why that doesn't necessarily lead to tearing down those houses and building something new. We don't want that, obviously, but it's, there are other ways to do it. So, Nomi and King County have done hybrids of A and B, uh, which we're looking at possibly doing. Um, so, I will keep you informed as we go through this process what that's looking like. Once we get down to us, the city, our jurisdictional responsibilities, we have some very specific things that we need to address. We have established our public participation program. Uh, we're going to be kicking off specific actions in September as part of that. But first of all, we have the early phase, which is basically assess housing needs. This is the three things on the left-hand side of your screen. Um, first of all, we have to establish projected housing needs consistent with allocation. So, this housing need allocation process hopefully will be complete by October, November. We'll have the numbers that we need so we can start this process. Uh, we will need to then document that we have sufficient land capacity in the city for everything that we're, that we need to build. And then we need, and so those are the, the sides that deal with, uh, housing needs. This bottom one here, identify areas of higher risk of displacement, is something that we need to dread, to address as part of the racially disparate impacts category early. So, there's two co, two processes that we'll be following throughout the whole housing, uh, land, uh, development, um, that will need to happen at the same time, that will inform each other but are separate. In the middle phase, which will be primarily next year, we'll be identifying various limitations to housing production. What that translates into is we'll be thinking through policies to identify specific actions that we need to do, specific implementation actions, uh, that I, I think we're going to be focusing on, uh, this things, uh, implementation, things that we can monitor over time, meaning that we can generate numbers and say, are we meeting the target or not? We're going to be assigning responsibilities for those particular things, and we're going to be assigning timelines for implementing those things. So, it'll be a change from what we have currently, which is, uh, some action items that are great, but we don't have responsible parties' timelines or really measurables about whether or not we're doing these things or not. Also, is, at the same time, we'll be identifying policy regulations that contributed to racially disparate impacts, displacement, exclusion, and housing. Uh, that could be in two different categories. That could be on one side, it could be, uh, is there, uh, longstanding development patterns in, in the city that it could be traced to some level of exclusion or in the past? Uh, and then there's also the, let's think about the language that we're using, is that consciously or unconsciously excluding or preventing particular things from happening by, by setting up particular, you know, you know, goals that are achievable? And lastly, the end phase, which is really, once we pull everything together and have the, the, the housing element done, is documenting those specific programs and actions that we need to, uh, achieve to see, uh, housing availability for everybody. Uh, addressing it for all incomes, uh, discussing about relationship to employment. Um, and also, the legislature is really focused on accessory dwelling units, as the panacea for everything. Um, I don't think it's going to produce the number of units they're hoping. Uh, it's a great option, it's just one of the many different things, but we also have to really talk about those as part of the process. Um, we have to include, uh, those policy injections for single-family residents, moderate density options. That means anything above single-family, up to multifamily, uh, say, 30 units or so. So, we've got to figure out in more detail, uh, what kind of things can we include in that middle housing category? Where should we be allowing those and how much we can anticipate, um, some level of, of housing to come out of them? And then finally, we have to implement, uh, identify and implement policies and regulations that specifically address and begin to undo racially disparate impacts, displacement, exclusion, and housing. So, this is where we really have to say, okay, uh, in particular area, we, we appear to have this pattern, or this is something we don't want to have continue or to lead to this particular issue. How are we going to deal with it? How are we going to measure whether or not these things are working over time and so forth? So, as you can see, I think, uh, I'm very grateful that, uh, Megan has taken this on entirely, uh, so I'm looking forward to your report by the end of the year. We have a lot of work to do, as I think you're getting the feeling. So, I've covered a bit of this in the previous slide, but I just want to, again, touch on some very specific things, um, that are, these state requirements are written into the RCW and the Growth Management Act for things that thou shalt include in the housing element. Uh, we talked about the inventory and analysis of existing and project, uh, projected housing needs, uh, for all kinds of housings, uh, housing. Uh, we've included, uh, a whole slew of new things regarding, uh, not only preservation, improvement, and development of housing, but specifically talking about the moderate density housing options, uh, to a higher degree than we have in the past. Uh, we're going to have to identify land capacity for a whole slew of housing types, everything from government-assisted, housing for a variety of income types, manufactured housing, group homes and foster care facilities, emergency housing, emergency shelters, and, again, consideration of duplexes, triplexes, and so forth. Uh, have to make adequate provisions for and projected needs for all the economic Have to make adequate provisions for and predicted needs for all the economics segments of the community, including a lot of documentation, consideration of housing locations in relation to employment. Again, they really focus on the accessory dwelling units. But all this includes a discussion of gaps in local funding, what kind of barriers there may exist in our development regulations or other limitations. This will be an interesting discussion because one half of Growth Management Act says that if development occurs, development should pay its way. Paying its way can be a barrier to providing affordable housing. And how we address that and how the local jurisdictions come up with other ways of trying to deal with this while still meeting some of the growth management requirements will be an interesting discussion. Again, there are a couple of things that I just want to make you aware of. We'll talk a little bit more about this when we talk about Development Code amendments in October. There is new state legislation dealing with accessory dwelling units that is different from the middle housing requirements and conflicts in some ways, two separate bills, two separate things that went through. And then there's the odd conversion of existing commercial or office uses to residential uses. This was a separate piece of legislation as well that passed this year that basically said that if you've got an existing office building or an existing empty commercial space, you're allowed to convert it to residential uses and increase the density by fifty percent over what is allowable in that zone district. That tends to play havoc with actually figuring out capacity and all those things that deal with impacts, because the legislation also says that we can't deal with the impacts of those. So if we have more, you know, people than would have been allowed in this area, there's no way for us to capture that and impact fees for either transportation, parks, schools, et cetera. Yes?
This is a question specific to Tumwater. Every now and then I'll see somebody bring up in the conversation, oh, shopping malls are dying all across America. Why don't we take these vacant, you know, shopping centers, convert them into housing? What are usually the but, you know, it seems like it should be a simple thing, oh, empty space, but fill it in. What are the barriers, though, to actually turning something like a shopping mall into a like a housing unit that?
It it actually, from the zoning perspective, probably not. The barriers aren't as great. When you look at building code issues, if there are particular things that were built, like to a commercial, especially to an industrial standard, that is different. And the basically residential is the highest standard to be built. So there may not, the building itself may not be built to the residential standards, and the upgrades that are required internally to bring it up to residential standards may be depending upon the age of the structure and how it was built. Like, for example, the brewery is not one building. It's like fifteen buildings that just sort of smashed together as they needed additional space. That's incredibly difficult to repurpose. We've had discussions with some of the office areas that had been leased to the state that are moving away from that, going to residential. There are some challenges with that. It's it's a little bit easier because the buildings are a little bit newer, but it's still not a smooth, easy transition. So that's that's one of the things. I guess what I'm also trying to emphasize is it's definitely something we're seeing in the city that people are talking to us about, and it'll probably something we really need to be thinking about.
Is it thing like that outright conversion, or is it possible to still have structures that are still commercial but are augmented somehow with or or for residential?
It's a potential, it's up to the building owner. If they say want to preserve a portion of it, say a street frontage for.
Okay, that's allowed. That's still.
Yeah, there that's that again, it's left to the underlying zoning to do that. But yes, I mean, the building owner could say, I want to keep like an office sector, or I want to have retail on this floor facing the street and everything else change, or something of that nature. So there's flexibility in that.
This is a place for the question, but talk about having ADUs in homes and then not being able to require that the owner live in either one of them and also that they be sold. So does that mean that every time we put in an ADU, we're going to have to divide a parcel?
That's a really good question, and I don't know the answer to that, or whether we would handle like a condo, that you would own the land underneath the building and that's it, and then you'd have negotiate, you know, you'd have some arrangement to access. We haven't gotten into that yet. And then the new requirements are that we we have to allow at least two ADUs on on lots within the city. So that's a big change as well. State law has preempted a lot of the things with ADUs. We can, the size of the ADUs can't be at eight hundred now. They can, the limit is a thousand. So all those, so there's a lot of tweaks to the code that we'll be having to talk about.
That's going to require policy changes in the land use element.
Yes.
Here, got to apply all these ideas to the land use element as well.
So the conversion and the ADUs and a couple of other things that are came out of legislation, those are the things that I'm concerned about. How do we deal with density? And how do we, you know, because that changes things. We can't say, you know, we're going to limit twelve units per acre and you're done, because we have a lot of these exemptions now. We can't count ADUs towards density. We can't. So how we actually deal with that in terms of capacity, we're still trying to figure that out.
Brad, in general, when there's that kind of, I'll call it densification of the of either the, you know, kind of a commercial space or the ADUs or whatever, do property values go up or down? And therefore, do does the city see greater or lesser revenue?
Good question, and I don't know necessarily the answer. I'm presuming that if we have a thriving economy, it will go up. But it's dependent upon factors beyond just more building on the site.
But in general.
In general, probably. But again, you know, I'm thinking east coast examples of, you know.
May not always play out.
Exactly. We're in a good situation now. The state is definitely, the local area is, but I don't necessarily say that we're always going to.
Be interesting if we had some idea of that in case it it bears upon, you know, funding of services or funding of, you know, city-funded housing or, you know, and where's that revenue going to come from?
Well, I think the primary concern that I always have is upkeep and maintenance of infrastructure, whether you're talking about the roads or the utilities, water, sewer, and so forth. And we, everything has a life, and we're a relatively new city for the most part, but we need to be mindful of, you know, building in such a way that we don't, you know, we don't put a lot of streets in for not a lot of density to basically to pay for the oncoming upkeep. That's what it comes down to. So that, I think, needs to be in the back of our minds. Just briefly to go over the racially disparate impact requirements as part of the review, we talked a little bit about the identifying local and policies and regulations that can result in disparate impacts. This can include zoning, disinvestment in infrastructure availability. I think we've talked a little bit about identifying, implementing policies and regulations to address and begin to undo these things. We're going to have to, the important thing to understand about all these things is we're going to have to show a lot of work as part of this process, meaning that we actually have to document the whole process that we followed for this. If you could, if you take a look, and I strongly encourage you to take a look at the guidance materials for this, number one, I think it's very well done, and I think again, as I said before, I think it's applicable beyond just the housing side. But there's a lot of things, thoughtful things that we need to do as part of this process that I think we really need to show our work for.
Can you give an example of of one or two items that we like digging through the code? Is it looking at historical settlement patterns?
It is all of that. It is talking with the community now, identifying those community members who haven't been reached out to and talked in the past to. That's the first stage. And then all that analysis of what has happened in the past and how those patterns have developed. I point a lot to a blog, Olympia Times. The writer has done a very good job of sort of historically looking, especially at Olympia, but I think some of the things are applicable to Tumwater, about what happened thirty years ago, what happened fifty years ago, and what has changed? You know, how had neighborhoods developed up to this point? What was the change? What was the result of that? I think that kind of work is something that we need to do a little bit more of in Tumwater. So and as part of this establishing anti-displacement policies, there's a whole slew of things to look at that I think will be appropriate for the community. We've got preservation of historic and cultural communities as well as investments in, again, the range of very low, extremely low and moderate income housing. Look at equitable development initiatives, explore further inclusionary zoning. More importantly, we started to do to do this, but I think we have a lot more work to do to see, to make sure it's actually used. I think this is a good tool, but I just don't think it's being used at all. Look a little more detail in our community planning requirements. We've talked a little bit about tenant protections, land disposition policies. I actually need to look up what this actually means. Land that may be used for affordable housing typically refers to publicly owned land that potentially could be used for affordable housing. We had done this exercise on the city level early on with the Regional Housing Authority. We really don't have a lot of city-owned property, period. And then we don't have a lot of city-owned property that we could convert to something else like affordable housing. Or for gophers, or for, there's a lot of people asking for that. Our overall update process is going to be five steps. And again, these steps, again, are pretty close to every other element that we're going to be doing. We have the engage the community part that starts in step one, but will continue throughout. We are in the gather and analyze data process right now through probably early 2024. We're going to be starting the evaluation of the policy process. First of all, we're going to start looking at what we have now, and I want to call your attention to your next planning commission meeting. We will take up the policies and land use element. We'll talk a little bit about what they are now, what can be improved, some initial things that we have found. We are still working on a broader gap analysis for everything, but I think we can definitely start it. You can get a feel of what we have and some of the issues that we're kind of starting to identify. So when we take a good look at these policies, I think you'll have a much better feeling about what may be more appropriate than not going forward. We'll be definitely revising the policies, starting that work primarily next year, and then reviewing and updating our regulations. We'll be doing these last two steps concurrently. I think it'll, we'll have a pretty good idea of what we're going to be needing to update in the regulation, so it won't be something we have to wait for the policies to to start on, but that's really kind of the the flow of the process. An important thing here, and I'm not going to read this because this is close to what was in the in the state language, and I think it does a great job of obscuring the actual point, which means I probably should have translated this into something more understandable. The important thing is all of these changes to the housing element, to the regulations for developing housing and everything else is exempt from SEPA, meaning that unless we are dealing with something that affects fish habitat, which is the a state thing that's in there, doesn't matter any other kind of habitat, only fish.
Go first.
This isn't open to SEPA review or challenge. This is a free pass essentially from the state on any changes of it. This is important because this is the different, this makes the process a little easier to go forward. Hopefully, we won't have somebody who thinks they can challenge, and then we have to claim that they can't. Anyway, this is just something important to understand for this particular part of the process. I'm just going to touch on some of the countywide planning policies. It's important to note that these planning policies are from 2015, but essentially, they're not that far off of our current requirements. As a general policy, just making needing basic human needs, clean water, air, housing, et cetera, all important, all necessary regardless of socioeconomic status. So obviously, this wasn't a new thing when we were developed, this is earlier. They have a large section dealing with affordable housing, again, increasing housing choices for all ranges of lifestyles, incomes, and so forth. Match housing types and costs that to your employment base and your income levels, again, focusing on low, moderate, and fixed income families. Accommodating moderate and low housing throughout an entire jurisdiction rather than isolating in particular areas. So this is another important thing to be thinking about when we're looking at policies and regulations dealing with housing. How well do we mix housing types, which can match up in some cases with income levels throughout the community? And then finally, exploring ways to reduce the cost of housing. We make more things here dealing with fair share distribution, working with the private sector, Housing Authority, and everybody else who builds housing to to build all kinds of housing. Modify, change, look for barriers to providing affordable housing, and look for assistance in obtaining funding and technical assistance for more housing. So again, the concepts are not new, pretty, pretty common. We also have some sustainable Thurston goals that I think are applicable that are part of our current plan that again, match what we we've been saying through GMA and through the countywide planning policies. Regulatory clarity and predictability to encourage urban infill and redevelopment, increase housing amid urban corners and centers to meet changing population, that's densification, providing sufficient housing for low and moderate income housing within each jurisdiction. So again, not like one community provide everything. I'm just going to move through these all similar. As a reminder, the we do have our housing action plan that was adopted by the Council of Twenty-One. We will be looking definitely to the actions that were identified in here to inform updates within the housing element as well. It's nice that we've done a bit of work already for this, though, it's really a matter of sort of gathering it all into one place, into one document that's less than four hundred pages. How the housing action plan works with the comprehensive plan and development regulations is here. The housing action plan, this is also part of the the state Commerce Guidance Materials. What we've done for our housing action plan will inform our policies and goals in our housing element, where we spend our money in the capital facilities element, and also how we deal with housing and residential uses in our land use element. And then implementation comes also not only through development regulations, but how we spend on infrastructure, what we do in terms of permitting processes, fee structures, and housing programs. The state also, another bill that passed this year involved simplifying permitting processes for building new housing. So we'll be touching on that as well. We talked a lot about what the purpose of the housing element is. I'm just going to go briefly through this housing element, how it how it's currently arranged and how we'll probably add on to it. Similar to the structure of the land use element, we have an introductory section that goes through the general state and county requirements, talks about how we update and amend this element. It talks about our existing housing distribution, where the housing is located, where we anticipate housing will be built in the near future. Talks about how housing is paid for. Talks a little bit about federal and state housing programs that are available and local financing. This is focused primarily on the provision of public housing or some forms of support at the lower end. It is in terms of the overall number of housing units, it's a very small number. We go into a detail about what our affordable housing needs are, everything from emergency shelters and transitional housing, subsidized housing, both public and private, that could be Section Eight here, this could be through the Thurston County, Thurston Housing Authority and other nonprofits, establishing definition for low and moderate incomes. Talk about our knee, our gaps, and where we need, how are you dealing with homelessness will be part of this discussion as well. Then we have our goals, policies, and actions. And within we have a regulatory barrier assessment. One of the requirements when we updated this in 2016 was to provide detail on things that we should be updating and changing to allow for building a more. that we should be updating and changing to allow for the building of more housing. This is even more detailed as part of the new requirements of what we're going to need to do. We're going to talk a bit about our citywide housing needs. That's what, what we're going to be coming down to and how it's going to be broken out by economic group. We're going to be talking about land for housing. This is where our overlap of the land use element comes in. Identifying specific population, identifying populations. And then basically making sure that we have sufficient land, and this will be expanded now that we have to deal with all income groups beyond just these categories, but this is a good start. We basically have to say we have adequate land everywhere for everything. Listing and future housing provisions deals with things about protection of housing, existing housing stock. Talks a little bit about employment and so forth. This I think will be restructured, but a lot of these things will remain the same. Terry?
When we make the assumption that we have plenty of land for everything, does that include the infrastructure to access that land for development?
Yes, we'll have to demonstrate that we, number one, we have the land. First of all, we, we are given a population and a housing count. We'll find the land to accommodate all that. We'll identify everything that needs to be done to develop that land in terms of capital facilities, water sewer extensions and so forth. We've been talking a bit about specific areas of the city we can identify to push development by city intervention perhaps to extend a sewer line here, a water line here, just to sort of push start some development that together probably can't do it, but if they have a little start, then they can develop. I think that kind of thing will be a bigger part of the discussion as part of this update than it had been in the past.
Just kind of to follow up on, going back to this chart on page 50, where, that talks about documenting sufficient land capacity. And so that would include what Commissioner Kurt Patrick is, is talking about, about having adequate land for that infrastructure, but also the services and various things. So that, that sounds fairly comprehensive.
Yeah, it will be very comprehensive. So the, the other thing that we'll have to do obviously is there are areas of the city that can't physically be developed, sensitive areas. The giant wetland complexes out on Trosper Road, for example, we're not anticipating we're going to, you know, build housing in the middle of those wetlands. The frogs might appreciate it, but nobody else would. So we, obviously we need to take into account certain limitations of certain lands within the city first, take those out of the equation and then do the capacity and houses from there. Again, copies of the housing element, I provided a link in here so you can access the housing element and any associated things that are currently available. Want to touch on briefly some of the commerce housing guidance materials. We start always with a periodic update checklist. Again, that's not current, so we, we're building our own, some additional requirements. We talked about the guidance to address racially disparate impacts. We've talked to a little bit about establishing housing targets for a community. You're welcome to look at this. It's pretty dry, but it explains in detail sort of the state process for how housing is allocated and how we will have those discussions at the county level. There is a general guidance for updating your housing element that's very useful from last year. It does take into account the major changes that were made at that time. And then recently they've started to issue more guidance relating to missing middle housing. They have a frequent, they have a fact sheet on missing middle housing. And more importantly, as of the end of last month, they've issued four volumes of what we could potentially do on the development code to accommodate this and to make it work within existing neighborhoods. I'm starting to go through it and it'll be available on our website and we'll, we'll talk more about that when we talk about development regulations. I think what we're not hurting for is guidance material. A lot of things we can go to if we have questions. Just some very quick snapshots of all the materials. And a little bit of reminder of where we are in the process. Community outreach and so forth will really be starting in September and go through early next year, the first phase of it anyway. We are looking to complete our gap analysis probably early October rather than September, but definitely want to get that done sooner. Data collection will be tied into some grants that we are currently pursuing through the state. We have one grant that will pay for a consultant to help us update the, the transportation plan and the economic development data for the economic development plan. We are in the process of completing a grant application for middle housing to help with that. And then we're also going to be completing a grant to help us with developing a climate element. So hopefully we'll have enough resources available to do all that. Talking, we've talked a little bit about what the gap analysis will be covering as part of the land use, similar process. This is a, I think the important thing I'd like to talk with the planning commission tonight. We, we split the land use and the housing elements into two different sessions because there are such big things. We're fortunate that Laura Hodgson from the State Department of Commerce will be joining us for our last meeting in September to talk about the housing element. So if, what I'd like from the planning commission members is for you to be thinking about specific questions as you review the materials that I provided that you would like Laura to talk more about. She is the person who wrote a lot of this and so forth. So it'd be an excellent opportunity to take advantage of her knowledge. Want to call that out. And if you could have anything that, any thoughts that you may have to me, say by the week of September 11, that would be good, then I can get that to Laura before she goes on vacation, before she comes back and comes to our meeting the week she comes back. Planning development will follow next year, followed by the legislative process for adoption and all that. So for the planning commission, you have two work sessions again in September. We'll be focusing our land use element discussion on the goals, policies and actions. We'll be talking a little bit more detail about things that we should be looking at when we're thinking about developing and updating policies as well as how we implement them. So I'm hoping that will sort of help you frame a lot of this stuff as we're starting to talk a little, you know, we're getting a little bit further into the weeds. And then I talked a little bit about what the housing element work session. In addition to anything, questions you may have for Laura, is there, if there's anything specifically that you would like us to address as part of that meeting, we're definitely open to hearing thoughts on that. For the planning commission's background, we are going to be presenting both the land use element and the housing element to the general government committee at their first meeting in September. What we, what we want to do is to make sure that the council has an idea of where you are in the process, so as they identify and think about things, we can have communication back and forth about what is important to look at, what are concerns, those kinds of things. We will have a joint work session with the council in December. And then we're looking for opportunities for other joint work sessions into, into 24, where it will be appropriate. It is definitely something the council has indicated, actually I was told on Monday that council was wondering where all the stuff on their agenda was. Had to explain that we had to pull some things because of outside, things outside our control, but really the council wants them. So I just want to let you know. So again, any emails, anything related, you can send it directly to me or you can send it to the comp plan email address. I monitor both of those. And then we now have, once we activate it, we have our, our website for the update. So you'll be able to click on that link and get to that information. So any questions or anything that we should have covered that we need to cover as part of our meeting on the 26th?
One thing comes to mind for me right off the bat for our visit with Ms. Hodgson from Commerce would be since she's, you know, deep in this and, and has a lot of, given it a lot of thought and has a lot of resources to hand is to give us some examples from other places that are, that have really, you know, stretched, like maybe, maybe Europe that have, you know, maybe their circumstances are quite a bit different, but maybe they can get our, you know, jar our thoughts into some really productive territories. So some really great examples from elsewhere would be terrific.
Have more specific question, looking through some of the stuff. One of the things that was picked out of here is the legislative requirement to allow two ADUs properties in an urban growth area. Seems counterproductive since that's the place where there's no bus transportation.
Yes, it's not necessarily tied to availability to transit. In fact, the requirements, and this is where the missing middle legislation and the ADU legislation differ. Missing middle, there was a requirement that where you provide those kinds of housing, most of it has to be near a, a major transit stop. Now, the major transit stop under that legislation was, was defined as bus rapid transit or essentially like the link by rail line. So we don't have anything in the community that meets the definition under that set of legislation. That had to do with also lessening parking requirements and so forth, if you're within a certain distance of that. ADU side, however, we do have some requirements that if you're within a half mile of a transit line that has 15 minutes service or less, which we are, we have both of the lines that serve the city fall under the category. We basically reduce parking requirements for ADUs is one part of it. And then there's some other things related to that. One additional thing with ADUs is if, if the, the, there's permanently affordable housing provided by ADU, you can put four units on a lot rather than just two. So that is something we would have to account for as well. That's far away. I'm not able to answer the question. I'm not, I'm not, I'm not.
Are you talking about unincorporated UTA?
Well, they're not incorporated, that's what.
Yeah, 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 well.
Well, actually.
There's the incorporated part.
Talking about pieces of county that will someday be part of the city, so.
Right, but not yet.
So by result, they're usually on the periphery. City is our way you shouldn't get from transportation.
Yeah.
Now, there may be, and I'm, I'm not exactly sure what page you're looking at, that they sometimes use the two terms when they don't necessarily mean the same thing. So in some contexts, when we say urban growth area, that means the city itself plus those areas in the county that potentially could be annexed. Or say for example, Grand Mound, which is a urban growth area, but it's county. All of those would be urban growth areas. In our conversations, when we speak of urban growth areas, we typically mean just those areas that are outside of our city that could be annexed. But probably in that context, it means the city and. But I think it, it does hit an important point of one of the questions we've had whenever they've tied particular things to distance to transit. Distance to transit is great if it's flat. It's different when you dive down a hill to M Street.
No cul-de-sac.
With no sidewalk, nothing, and then you're expecting people, you know, to be able to get to transit easily. So there, there's, that's where I'm, I always have issues with very simple things like that.
And we need to be clear about a real person, you know, as the, as the crow flies doesn't really work for that because, you know, crows don't take the bus. So, okay. Other, other points you want to raise? One, one question that I have, and maybe this would be something for, for Ms. Hodgson too, but maybe it's been entertained here. And I can't remember both on the chart on page 50, but also later on on page 60, we talk about working with the private sector, housing authority and so on. But I'm wondering about major employers in our vicinity, whether within the city, within the county, or nearby enough where people are likely to live in our city and go to there and see, you know, are there, are they, is there interest in working with those major employers? I'm thinking like JBLM, other, other good ones. The state, particularly for our area, medical, that, you know, is there interest in looking to come to some, some kind of partnership with? To help underwrite housing for their very employees?
Yeah, that's actually a good, a good question. The, the county, I think, had started something along those lines through Thurston Thrives. And they identified specific areas like environment and other things that would be sort of a partnership between the private sector and the public sector to achieve particular policy and public goals. Housing was one of them. I think they had initial discussions about how there should be more cooperation between the private and the public sector about provision of housing, location of housing, all those kinds of things. So I'm wondering, we've gotten away from that as part of those discussions. Those really aren't happening as much, I think, but I think that's a good thing to be thinking.
Public, public. Make sure I haven't missed any hands up from folks on Zoom. Are we done with that portion? All right. That's pretty, that's pretty good. Clipped right along. Okay then, our next, our next meeting date will be the 12th. With due date for further questions today before on the 11th. And we'll be taking up some land use stuff, land use policies. Anything you want to add to that? Other than that, is there any further discussion or a motion or?
A move that we adjourn?
That was Commissioner Edwards, seconded by Commissioner Kurt Patrick. Thanks to you guys. All in favor of adjourning tonight, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Great, we are adjourned. Thanks, everybody.
Thank you.